So, welcome everyone. The council has just returned from a closed session and I will ask our city attorney if there's anything to report out.
There's no reportable action.
Thank you. And so now we will call to order the regular session of the City Council of Atascadero and I'll ask Councilmember Borbo to lead us in a pledge to the flag.
Please rise and join me in saluting our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And roll call please. Councilmember Borbo.
Here.
Councilmember Funk.
Here.
Councilmember Darris.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Newsom is absent and Mayor Moreno.
Here.
Thank you. All right, so if you are watching or listening tonight, welcome. If you would like to speak at any time during the time set aside for community forum or during public comment on any of the items that are on our agenda, you could do so if you're in this webinar by simply raising your hand and we'll call on you. If you are watching on TV or maybe you're listening on the radio, you can call via phone and that number is 805-538-2888 to provide public comment over the phone. When you call, please let us know which item it is that you would like to speak on. And again, that number is 805-538-2888 to provide public comment. Let's see, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Funk, a second by Councilmember Darris and we will waive the reading in full of all ordinances that appear on this agenda and the titles of the ordinances will be read aloud by the city clerk at the first reading after the motion and before the council votes. Roll call please. Councilmember Funk.
Yes.
Councilmember Darris.
Yes.
Councilmember Borbo.
Yes.
Mayor Moreno.
Yes ma'am.
Motion passes. Thank you. We have no presentations this evening, so we're moving on to our consent calendar and consent calendar typically contains items that are considered routine by city staff and can be voted in one motion unless there's a member of the council or the public that wishes to pull an item for further discussion. And if that is the case, we will pull that item and we can vote on that separately from the others. So I do know that we need to pull, we have a change in a number on item number three. So let's pull three for some discussion. Is there anything from the council on any of the other items? Seeing none, I will look to the attendees, if any of the attendees are wishing to pull an item or comment on an item on the consent calendar, could you raise your hand? I am seeing no hands raised and Laura, do we have anything via email commenting on the consent calendar?
We do not.
Okay, so let's go ahead and do a motion on the first two. Can I get a motion in a second?
Move approval of consent calendar items one and two.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Borbo, second by Councilmember Funk, roll call please. Councilmember Borbo.
Yes.
Councilmember Funk.
Yes.
Councilmember Darris.
Yes.
Mayor Moreno. Yes ma'am. Motion passes. Thank you. And I will turn it over to Rochelle Record.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a correction in item number three, which is a budget adjustment for the Atascadero Mall sewer project. We have run into an obstruction as part of that project. This is a boring underneath Highway 101 to install a sewer line to replace one that's old and failing and a maintenance problem. We believe that the obstruction that we ran into is an old box culvert, drainage box culvert. And unfortunately, that is going to be quite pricey to get around. The reason that we needed to pull this item is that there was a typo in the recommendation in the staff report. The fiscal impact and the discussion part was all correct, but the recommendation stated that we needed to allocate an additional $250,000. Unfortunately, that's actually $325,000 as reported in the narrative and so we'd like to make that correction. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you Rochelle. Do we have any questions from the council? Councilmember Funk.
Just to clarify for this for the public, is it fair to say that we, that, that the city engineer and others looked through several different options for this and all of them were costly and deeply unpleasant?
Absolutely, positively. They spent days and hours and hours and hours looking at different possible solutions, different scenarios, trying to figure out which was the most cost-effective path forward and that was the one that was selected.
Okay, and is it also fair to say that the information available from Caltrans about what was underneath the freeway that they built did not include any information whatsoever about this box culvert?
That is absolutely correct.
Which does happen.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Funk. Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this item? If you're on the webinar, you can simply raise your hand at the bottom there of the screen, have that raise hand button. And I will ask Luke, are there any callers who would like to comment on this item?
There are not.
And I'll ask Laura if we have any email comment regarding this item.
We do not.
Thank you. I will bring it back to council, close public comment and ask for a motion.
I'll move to accept item A3 on the consent calendar.
As amended?
As amended, yes, I'm sorry.
I'll second.
With a motion by Councilmember Darris, a second by Councilmember Borbo. Roll call please. Councilmember Darris.
Yes.
Councilmember Borbo.
Yes.
Councilmember Funk.
Yes.
Mayor Moreno.
Yes ma'am.
Motion passes. Thank you. And next on the agenda are the updates from our city manager, Ms. Record. We see your screen, but we don't hear you in case you think you're talking.
I was thinking I was talking. I'm the only one listening though, so I wanted to make sure that you could see my screen and hear me, so thank you. Wanted to talk tonight first about the Earthshine Creek Cleanup Day. So the second Earthshine Atascadero Creek Cleanup Event this year was sponsored by the City of Atascadero and Atascadero Bible Church and it was held here last Saturday and was once again a huge success. Nearly 100 volunteers showed up bright and early Saturday morning, including our own mayor Heather Moreno and council members Charles Borbo and Susan Funk. The number of volunteers is outstanding. As Earthshine says, they normally get between 25 and 30, so they appreciated the 100 volunteers. City staff, including officers from code enforcement and the police department, were also on hand and pitching in to help and everyone did an amazing job. According to our Public Works Operations Manager, who was there, a total of 25 cubic yards of trash was loaded up and hauled away. The dumpsters were donated by waste management, so we always appreciate their contribution to these events. Earthshine organizers say, because of these back-to-back cleanup events, we were really able to cap off the successful February cleanup and really gave the area a full final shine. And the best part, of course, is how amazing the creek and surrounding areas look. Additionally, in between February and April events, city staff members as well as local resident volunteers have been making ongoing efforts to help keep the area cleaned up. We believe that the efficient cooperative neighbor nature of the City of Atascadero truly makes it a standout performer in these events. Your team has worked with us and provided amazing support with disposal as well as outreach and everyone deserves much appreciation for what was accomplished. We look forward to working together again in the future to help Atascadero be as beautiful as it can be. We are very, very appreciative of all of the work that Earthshine does. They are a great partner to work with and we thank them for organizing this, bringing all of the equipment, spending the hours that make these things happen. So thank you, big thank you to Earthshine. On Saturday, we also had our virtual Brew at the Zoo event. So our virtual Brew at the Zoo 2021 was a big success. On Saturday, participants experienced a virtual beer festival that was broadcast live from the zoo. Over 325 tickets were sold. $2,500 was raised on Saturday with the Meerkat Challenge and over 20,000 was raised in total for the event, which benefits the Charles Paddock Zoo. So a big thank you to everyone who participated and were patient with some of the technical challenge experienced in our live broadcast. It was a fun event and I heard good thing from those that did participate. The city is also very pleased to announce that Mr. Putters' Putt-Putt is our new watercraft concessionaire at Atascadero Lake. The new name is Mr. Putters' Paddle Boats, of course it is. Mr. Putters is planning to provide some fun and new activities at the lake, including pedal bike rentals and games like Jenga, gemstone mining and cornhole. Snacks and drinks will also be made available for purchase and Mr. Putters' Paddle Boats expects to be open for business by May 15th, just in time for summer. So this is exciting partnership and we're looking forward to working with Mr. Putters. Want to let you know that the fourth annual citywide yard sale is coming up. So shop for treasures and sell your stuff at the annual Atascadero Citywide Yard Sale on Saturday, June 5th, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Sales will be held all over town at local homes and businesses. More than 125 yard sales are anticipated to participate and more event details are available at atascaderoyardsale.com and at visitatascadero.com. Proceeds from this event support the Joy Playground, so we really appreciate anybody that wants to get rid of some of their stuff or acquire new stuff. We highly encourage everyone to participate in this and to sign up for the event. And last but not least, wanted to let you know a little bit about the 2021 Summer Concert Series, so mark your calendars. Our 2021 Concert Series will start on July 24th and run through September 18th. They will take place at the Atascadero Lake Bandstand from 6:30 to 8:30 PM and these events are always free to the public, so bring your low back chair and get ready to enjoy great music from local bands around the central coast. For band and event details and for information about all our events, go to visitatascadero.com. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you Rochelle. Very much looking forward to the concerts in the park.
Yes. In person.
Yes, a nice, safe outdoor activity for all. Wonderful. Any questions from the council? All right, seeing none, thank you very much and we will move on to community forum. Community forum is reserved for persons who want to address the city council on any matter that is not on our agenda tonight and over which the council has jurisdiction. Speakers are limited to three minutes and a maximum of 30 minutes will be allowed for community forum. We have turned on the timer to assist speakers to know when their time is up. We do ask that you would state your name for the record before making your comments. And so I will start with anything via email. I'll ask our city clerk, have we received any comments for community forum via email?
We do have a few.
For community forum or item C1?
I believe we have a handful of them that would fall under community forum versus item C1.
Okay, wonderful. Do you want to go ahead and?
Yeah, just pulling them up right now.
Okay.
So our first one is from Kate Montgomery to the Atascadero City Council. The longer the City of Atascadero posts phones allowing us citizens the opportunity to choose community choice energy, the more time I have to learn about it and the more I know, the more certain I am that I want the cleaner environment and lower cost of community choice energy for my family. It's past time for the city council to fund a staff report and get it done as soon as possible so that us citizens of Atascadero can make our choice like all our neighboring towns. Thank you and please move quickly on this issue. The next one is from Dan Cook. Councilmembers, please reserve the necessary monies to fund a staff report on community choice energy. The study has been put off until early next year due to budgetary issues and now is the time to provide the funds needed to complete this very important staff report. Thank you.
Laura, if I could stop you for one moment, I think these are items for C1 because people are wanting this to be addressed under the strategic priorities and our plan, that, that is the sense that I'm getting.
Okay.
Well, Councilmember Funk is nodding her head that that could possibly be the case because I noticed some specifically for C1 that were addressing 3CE, so I'm thinking that that's kind of what the, and one of them says, you know, for tonight's agenda, but it doesn't say community forum, I think that's what they need.
Then we will save them for that.
Okay, is there anything else that's not related to that?
No.
Okay, which is our very next item coming up, so we're not waiting long folks. So now I will go to the phone and I will ask Luke if we have any callers that are wishing to speak at community forum.
We do not have any callers for this item.
Okay, and then to anyone on the webinar, if you would like to speak at a topic on community forum, simply raise your hand using that raise hand button and we will call on you. So I see Mr. Jeff Osland. Mr. Osland, you are muted. There you go.
I'm hoping I'm unmuted.
Yes, you are.
Great, Jeff Osland calling on behalf of Glenn's Repair and Rental. My business was vandalized over the weekend by somebody shooting something at the glass and causing thousands of dollars in damage along with other businesses in town. I do want to give Tasker Police Department a verbal accommodation from me as a business owner. I wasn't even off the phone with dispatch when they arrived and the great work by Handler Hall in being able to take the photos necessary before the hole window dropped and seeing where the hole entered. I can't say enough about our police department for this weekend and how quick they are acting to hopefully take the people to justice, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Osland. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak at community forum? Seeing none, we'll close community forum and bring it back to council and staff and yes, I think we all are grateful for our police department and the work that they're doing and our sympathies, of course, go out to Mr. Osland and all of the businesses who have suffered vandalism, is that even a word, vandalizing? But hopefully, like you said, those individuals will be brought to justice. So now we are on to our next item. We have no public hearings tonight and we have one thing, which is our management report. This is our draft strategic plan and draft action plan study session. And so as I hand this over to our city manager, just to kind of preface this with, this is, this has been about two years plus in the making. So back at strategic planning in 2019 where we all came together and said, you know, let's look at the potential for a sales tax measure, doing a study with our, or a poll with our residents. We did outreach in 2019 and 2020 with our Talk on the Block series. And then this year, we've done a significant amount of outreach in terms of our D20 study sessions, our strategic planning. And this is sort of the culmination of that before we go into nailing down the budget. And so I want to thank staff, you have all done a tremendous amount of work in this and have really done a great job. So look forward to seeing what you're showing us tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. I know you guys have heard this many, many times, so please bear with me as I just repeat a little bit what you said. Jerry's going to be handling the slides for me tonight so that I can look things up and have things at my fingertips, so thank you Jerry. Let's go on to the summary and recommendation slide. So again, as you said, as part of the strategic planning, we've been talking about this for several years. Our strategic planning process is a huge part of our budgeting process. It's important that the council set the goals and the priorities for the next two years on what do they want to see accomplished in addition to the normal operations and how do you want to change those operations and tweak these operations? So an action plan, the council will meet together as part of their strategic planning session, set some strategic priorities, give a little bit of details of what they're expecting and then the staff goes back and develops a draft action plan. An action plan will outline the city council goals. It details in a broad sense the actions to be taken over the next two year and really drives that budget preparation. Tonight, we're asking staff to review and provide feedback on that draft action plan. You talked a lot about outreach. This is not an action plan that, you know, council goes, or staff and council kind of go in a back room and come up with something. This is something that takes a lot of public outreach, a lot of input, a lot of discussions that happened prior to this. We had council meetings, emails, discussions, Talk on the Block. We did a survey, statistically valid survey. We had a number of nights that we talked about considering a sales tax and whether to place it on the ballot and what some of our needs were. We had discussions, multiple discussions on outreach and oversight and what was that going to look like if the sales tax passed? And then in January, and Jerry, next slide. In January, we started really getting into, once the sales tax measure passed, basically what we call the road to budget adoption. We started with a kickoff session in early January where staff outlined a lot of the needs that they see it. These are things that have been brought up on Talk on the Block and a lot of those sales tax discussions. We showed you a video where we discussed each of those. That video was shown at each of the study sessions and then we held nine different study sessions at various times and dates and all of that. From there, we went into our 11th meeting on the road to the budget adoption and had a council goal setting session on February 19th and 20th where we talked about the priorities. We took everything and went through that. On March 9th, we reviewed the goal setting session and here we are today going through the action plan and reviewing the action plan. Just as a quick reminder, want to kind of remind you of everything that fed into this action plan and that you all kept in mind as we were doing the strategic priorities in addition to staff keeping in mind as we were trying to come up with specific actions for that. You know, what was going well in the city? We talked about events and downtown and La Plaza. We liked the small town feel, the friendliness, the employees felt very responsive. Next, we talked about what would make Atascadero better. There was a lot of discussion about police and fire and staffing, the homeless, the downtown, the need to have the equipment for employees to do the job, to provide police services, to provide fire services and all of those services. Those were recurring themes. We asked them, you know, what types of things that have been put off for a long time are more urgent and what are less urgent? We didn't have a lot for less urgent, but certainly the fire, police, safety and staffing were recurring themes on some of the urgent priorities. We asked what success would be, what would that look like? You know, we got a lot of vibrant downtown, adequate staffing, police, the feeling of being safe, you know, safety, a safe town, the perception of safety was a lot of the discussion. While we don't have a lot, knock on wood, a lot of violent crimes, there are times when people don't feel safe walking through the downtown or others, so a lot of that came up and that was, that was important. And then we asked how success should be measured. Again, a lot of information on, you know, are we able to retain our employees? Do we have adequate staffing? What does our equipment look like? I think we showed pictures of extremely old equipment that we have that we still use. We have 50 to 60-year-old pieces of equipment that we use on a regular basis that just aren't meeting what we need to do. After you guys reviewed all of this, we, we input all of the information from the, from the, the study sessions and categorized it into about 60 different recurring themes and then we broke those into four focus areas and from those four focus areas, we defined and discussed the focus area and kind of gave some notes to staff on what is it they wanted to accomplish in each of these focus areas. The four focus areas that were selected were economic and community vibrancy, fiscal infrastructure efficiency and sustainability, ensuring public safety and providing exceptional city services and quality of life. And that is what is in the action plan. Next slide. So the action plan, the draft action plan that you have before you outlines council's priorities. This isn't a comprehensive list. It doesn't say things like provide fire service or emergency response. These are the priorities kind of on top of the ongoing operations and they're broad general areas. It does have actions. The actions aren't specific, but are more action areas to be undertaken over the next two years. The action plan is not a detailed budget, but it drives the budget. Provided tonight in the packet were some estimated costs of some of the actions that we think they're going to take, their ranges of costs. We're not budgeting down to the nearest $5, but this is kind of a plan of what staff believes it's going to take to implement this action plan and will continue to refine and adjust those. But tonight, what we're looking for is general council feedback. Are we accomplishing, are we setting out to take the actions to accomplish those things that you guys hope? Is this a plan that we're on the right track and that we can then use to go ahead and feed the budget? It will come back to you for adoption after, after tonight's discussion. So we're not adopting that tonight, but we are just going through it. What I'd like to do is just pull up the action plan and we'll just start going through it. And what we'll do is I'll go through each section and then as we, as we finish a priority, if I can just stop there and answer any questions we might have on that one priority area. There are some things that need to be refined in this. I will admit, as, as staff was focusing on what needs to be where, you know, things like general plan update, sometimes it's in year one to two, sometimes it's in year, after year two, a lot of that is because really it's going to take about two years to complete the general plan, so it's right at that, at that level. We can fix some of those things later. I'm not, you know, necessarily looking for that detail tonight, but I am looking for, hey, we just missed. 3C energy should be, you know, we really want to see that in supporting families. That would be important. Those are the types of things that we're looking for. You know, do we have our priorities wrong? Did we miss something? Is there an action in here that, that we don't have buy-in on? And with that, we will just jump right in and jump to, yep, keep going Jerry. Economic and community vibrancy. So the group that undertook economic and community vibrancy defined it as creating the environment and services to nurture quality and diverse economic, recreational and community connections that create prosperity and enrich our genuine, authentic community. And the key focus areas included recreation and events and three other focus And three other focus areas that I'll get to in a little bit. But while we were looking at recreation events. People, the the group wanted us to make sure that we kept in mind communal events and shared experience and connections. And that those always keep in mind, you know, those recreation zoo hiking trails, parks, that those are important to our community. It's, you know, we hear a lot about safety, you heard a lot of that. But it was definitely this group's march, don't forget about some of those those other things. So when we were looking at recreation events. You know, the first action obviously is to restart events. COVID has had a huge impact on events. And while Terry and Recreation and Public Works and everybody and IT have done a wonderful job with various virtual events and holding events where we can. Certainly, we've missed things like Winter Wonderland and the Tamale Festival and dancing in the streets. And so trying to get those events restarted. Trying to, we have a brand new zoo event center. It is done, waiting for ribbon cutting. We would love to actually see events there in the next two years. So starting to look for creative events there. And designing new events around the new plaza and Centennial Plaza. To get some of these public spaces used and bring back some of that vibrancy. In there, we also have some things that are beyond two years. We're not putting a ton of money or focus in them. But we're always looking for opportunities, whether it be grants or you know, donations or some of those to look for extra hiking trails and pathways and park amenities and what can we get done there? The next focus area was downtown. And the group wanted us wanted a thriving downtown, somewhere where people want to come to. The infra nice infrastructure. It's shovel ready for development. Enjoy the outdoors, more outdoor spaces. Completion of downtown improvements and collaboration with businesses. And up up zoning mixed use and potential incentives. The first one is is the biggest. Is pursue funding and complete construction documents for the downtown infrastructure enhancement project. This is a project that we worked on for a number of years. To try and enhance the walkability, the safety, the business vibrancy of the downtown. We are proposing to use local transportation funds, LTF funds. To begin construction design while we look for grant funding. A lot of the grant funding, there is a lot of grant funding out there right now, so that's a good thing. They're all looking for shovel ready projects. So having a project that council's already approved, the design concept already has gone through all that public process is a good thing. But taking that one step forward to actually doing the construction documents. We have applied for the federal community, community project funding. We are looking at a number of other grants. To see if we can, there might be some potential to use some of the ARP funding that is coming to the city and others. So this action is going to drive a lot of other things. So we're looking at that. You know, we have assist development of new restaurants. There are some startup costs, we'll probably be talking about that. Trying to utilize our plaza spaces, we talked about that. Look for funding and opportunities to fix existing street trees and sidewalks in the downtown. We set aside $75,000 to address planting some of the new street trees and addressing some of the sidewalk issues right around those street trees. We have a lot of that left over. But we don't believe that that's going to be able to address everything in the downtown. But it'll make headway, so that's that's included in our funding. The additional money is is more move into tier two to finish everything. Pursue opportunities along East Mall, we have that property there with the vacant house. We want to make sure that we discuss and come up with a good plan to help drive more vibrancy in the downtown, whether that's you know, putting it up for development, a great development, new development, or doing a parking lot for the hotel across the bridge or or some combination of both. We have a little bit of bond funds left to do a modest project in that. So we we can keep that going. The preservation of the theater, we've been working hard, council adopted a resolution. We keep talking with both the theater owner, building owner and the theater operator. Trying to make sure that we can assist anyway in getting shuttered venue grants, getting those back payments paid and and things moving forward. We have pursue the armory site as a potential location for fire station number one. City does not own the fire armory. We we really have no control over what goes on at the armory site. That is a state property and the state owns it. But thanks to some of council members, Borbo's connections at the National Guard. We're starting conversations with the Department of General Services, who would be in charge of selling the armory. And HCD, Housing and Community Development, State Housing, Community Development. Because there are some requirements from the state on that. To see what we can do on buying or trading the property or working with HCD to get the fire station there or or some other things. Beyond two years is completing the downtown infrastructure enhancement. Really looking at up zoning as part of the general plan update. Whenever that is, whether we're between one and two or or they're off there. And engage property owners and tenants for the vacant lot. We'll go ahead and go to safe and hospitable business work environment. The group talked about connectivity throughout the community. Support infrastructure to attack attract businesses, broadband restaurants, open late, all night coffee shops. Built business infrastructure, safe and hospital welcoming environment. Constructive engagement with those experiencing homelessness, tied to mental health support. Supportive engagement by business, commercial nodes. So our first action obviously is to work to enhance broadband infrastructure. We talked about that at our March meeting. And and a little bit as part of strategic planning in our SB 1090 funds. We have hired somebody with those special SB 1090 funds. To help us with economic development and some of the planning things. And certainly, the American Rescue Plan does specifically calls for eligibility for broadband projects. So between SB 1090 and that and and Rescue Plan, we we have some opportunities there. And evaluate areas for restricted time parking. This is one that when staff goes and talks to downtown businesses. Parking continues to be a frustration, particularly long term parking in those prime spots. Right in front of businesses that are open. So you know, maybe we can talk about that. We have the expand the outreach for underrepresented underrepresented residents, our team. That is the sister, the kin, the similar to the cat team. We'll talk about that a little bit further under unhoused. Although the our team is certainly broader than just the unhoused that we're talking about. And again, the downtown infrastructure enhancement plan will be huge. And the last key focus area under economic vibrancy is business infrastructure, technology and support. We want to continue all of our work to creatively support development at the Del Rio, Dove Creek and San Anselmo nodes. We had implement an online payment and tracking system for city fees and tax payments. This is a biggie for a lot of our customers that come in often looking for that. So you'll see, you know, we're proposing to look at various options for taking credit cards. Same thing with TOT bed tax. Make it easier for those and try and help things out. Wastewater capacity charges and other development fees that may discourage desire types of businesses. We're always trying to weigh, hey, we need we need to pay for the expansion of the wastewater sewer plant. And what's fair is to do that based on capacity. Sometimes those fees are a barrier to a small restaurant or a small bakery or some of those types of things. Do we want to consider subsidizing certain types of businesses or looking at ways to help alleviate that barrier if we're trying to attract those? So that that will be a discussion we're looking for. Look for opportunities and grants to be fun to fund infrastructure. We're hoping to hire a grant writing firm to both keep us up to date, look for grants for those things, those projects that we want to do. And hopefully some funds or some resources to help us write some a couple of grants too. We're looking at a customer satisfaction survey. We do have a customer satisfaction survey for our permit counter. I will tell you that not many people fill it out at all. So how can we incentivize that? Maybe a small gift card might actually get people to to talk to us so that we can get better. We talk about engineering standards. Right now that we don't have clear engineering standards, that's a frustration for businesses and development. And we had performed critical third party review of permitting processing towards essential is basically essentialism review. We had it in the beyond the two year action plan. But it did fit in with the within the tier one, the general funds. These are not D20 type of thing in tier one. So I did move it up to year one to two action item. And with that, before I move on to fiscal and infrastructure efficiency and sustainability, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that very thorough overview. Council questions of the city manager on this section. Council member Funk.
Yes, thank you. What is on on the starting on on the first of these pages on page 41? What's prompting the interest in Eagle Ranch? That's really far out of our infrastructure support. And in distant from what we can, from what can engage back to us as a community.
Give me one moment to get there.
It's on the bottom of the page that we're looking at, but we can't actually see it.
Yeah.
I can't see the line.
Yeah. There are some unique opportunities at Eagle Ranch. Primarily, the property is close to the freeway. They had talked about having that be a resort and sort of a commercial property. There is still some interest in those types of uses in that area. We think that they would be good synergy for the restaurants, the shops, the activities here in Atascadero that we would like to see. If you have people going to stay at a nice resort or hotel in the beautiful property there right by the the freeway. They're going to have to go eat, shop and do other things. And certainly, we think that could help. That's in the beyond the two year action items. That's not what we're planning in the next two years. But we want to keep that in the planning horizon.
The in the item for under that same area for encouraging events on privately owned vacant properties downtown. And also on the following page where we have a beyond two year item for engaging property owners and tenants to encourage compatible development of vacant lots. Would those two action items encompass consideration of some more robust council policy? We've we've thrown all the carrots that there are at these people that that have vacant dirt lots in Colony Square and vacant properties that are falling down or red tag downtown. And if we can, we consider something that a more evaluate options for a a more robust set of incentives. That might include registration of vacant and blighted properties and some kind of a fee some other kinds of standards for how those properties are made available to for the city to use. If they're not being used by the owner.
We have those in the beyond the two year action items, so not necessarily part of these two years. You have we think you definitely need to have more discussions on that in the the horizon. The general plan will take up a lot of your planning staff. Who would kind of generally lead these kind of discussions. Between that and certainly everything that's going on at Del Rio. Even at Dove Creek and a lot of other proposed projects in the work. There is a lot going on in years one to two. We can look for opportunities to do that. But we felt that, you know, just trying to at least get the dirt lot at Colony Square. Let's at least allow some food trucks and some small events there. Was doable in the one to two year range with an eye towards beyond to, you know, let's help these businesses get out of COVID. Landlords that were hit hard too. And then we'll start looking at, you know, carrot versus stick and and what options we have. Certainly, council has the ability to to move some of these priorities around.
Fair enough, thank you. And then on the our team. You're you're going to come back and give us a much more thorough explanation of that a little later?
Yes.
Okay, I will defer then to that, but I but that I do want to understand that better.
Yes.
And then the obvious in terms of the missing items. The on the focus area for business infrastructure and technology in attracting business. This is where I think we need to see communities, the evaluation of community choice energy. And be there so that our businesses are not at a competitive disadvantage in terms of their power costs, even as we're being concerned about their competitive disadvantages with regard to sewer costs.
Okay, I had I had added it to the draft under supporting families, but we could certainly put it here instead. Or both.
The council committed to, and we do want to make it clear that we are following through with that commitment to bring that back. And have the discussion in February with the agreement and and really go through that whole process. So we've committed to that. And I think putting that on here is important to show the county, to show the public that we are following through with that commitment. So whether you put it here or the other place, you know, it's six of one half dozen of the other.
That that completes my questions.
Okay, does that work for you guys? Explore community choice energy February 2022? Okay.
And Councilmember Borbo and Dara's, any questions before we move on to the next area?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, thank you. And I do see a hand in the in the public. We will get to public comment after we've gone through the whole thing. So I it's not that I don't see you. I do see you, but we will open up public comment. So you're first in line, you can keep your hand up.
Okay, the next area or key priority area was fiscal and infrastructure efficiency and sustainability. And really, one of the first key focus areas was asset management, replacement and modernization. You can see the notes to consider, but also I'll just jump right into action items. The first accent item we have is to purchase and implement an asset management system. This was huge to staff. Right now, we have a hodgepodge of various spreadsheets and papers and notes and everything everywhere where, you know, fire has some stuff and police has some stuff and finance has some stuff and technology has some stuff. But we don't have one comprehensive system to help us get our arms around. But we don't have one comprehensive system to help us get our arms around. You know what we have, what the condition is, what the life is, what we need to be funding and planning on funding to replace this on a regular and systematic basis. You know, as part of the action plan, we're just we're proposing that we have some funds in some other funds, some impact fee funds, where we believe that we can purchase the software and do the inventory to populate the software. But then we would propose using D twenty funds to pay for the maintenance of that software, that that annual maintenance fee. So the the big investment, this is a big investment. We're estimating about $420,000, give or take to to get it populated, do the inventory, do all of that. Certainly, we'll continue to ways to look for ways to to reduce that. But the the annual $20,000 a year or so to maintain that we're looking for D twenty funds. And that's that would basically cover the first three bullet points. Then begin funding vehicle, technology, equipment, infrastructure and facility reserves. We have been funding some vehicle reserves. We have been funding some technology reserves. We have not been funding everything. And so trying to start putting away some funds so that when something becomes too old, the funds are there and available to to replace them. So, you know, if you look at the the spreadsheets, we are proposing that some of this be funded, this be funded with D twenty funds. This was a huge one for staff. If we can start funding these and we then we know we'll have on hand the money to replace the fire engines, cardiac monitors, patrol cars, fix luki roofs or HVAC at the police station. Mobile data terminals, all of those things. So that's that's critical to us. Replace failing, vulnerable and vital equipment. This is all part of that infrastructure that we've we've been talking about for a few years. We have a lot of things in the in the proposal. Some things we have reserves set aside for. So we did have adequate reserves to replace the MDTs. Those are the the computers in the various fire units that they use. We have money to replace five marked vehicles and three unmarked vehicles over the two year period, money to replace computers, servers, printers and scanners and money in year two to replace wildland engine seventy five seventy four, which will be twenty years old by the time we replace it. We are looking for D twenty funds for things that are not on the replacement schedule. A biggie is handheld radios. That's a big ticket item, extremely critical for our fire and police. We have some issues with police. With some of the new changes on encryption, our our radios are not compatible. We need a lot of radios. It's it's not cheap. We're looking for D twenty funds for that. We're also looking for D twenty funds for the radio repeater replacement. It's critical infrastructure for our radio system so that we can talk. We're looking to replace our CAD RMS system. That's computer aided dispatch and record management system in the police department. Again, some of the changes that have been made at the federal level make our system really unwieldy to to fit into their new conformance. It's just time to replace it. We have small things on there like batteries for the cardiac monitors. And we do have a small bit of park infrastructure replacement. The dock at the lake is closed because it is broken and we can no longer fix it. We need to do something with that and some of those sidewalks that are heaved there. We have that new great concessionaire that wants to do bicycles. We don't want people tripping to when they go visit them. And then we have an ambulance that we're proposing to replace. The city does have one city owned ambulance. It's four wheel drive so that we can go into the riverbed. And we would like to replace that. It's not a part of our regular equipment replacement schedule. And but we do propose if we buy another used one. It's used for the riverbed and used on large fires where they need paramedics in an ambulance. We also have some general fund replacement where we're not using D twenty, but but we do need to get things done, whether it be zoo electrical and replacing a fifty plus year old walk in freezer at the zoo that is definitely not energy efficient with something that actually runs. Council chamber technology. Technology changes so fast. It's seven years since we put in all this stuff, actually eight years. Unfortunately, it doesn't work that long. So if we want to remain accessible and open, we're going to have to look at that. Replacing turf mowers and Paloma Park parking lot and shade sales and the teen center. Those these are all smaller ticket items compared to those radios and that CAD and and some of those things. And then we're talked about beginning replacement of fire station number one. Replacing an essential services building is not cheap. The the building code for these essential services buildings is pretty strict and robust. We looked at that in two thousand seventeen and at that time renovating fire station one, number one was about a $9 million proposition with some of the increase in construction costs. We're now estimating that that's going to be over eleven. We will have to issue bonds that we can pay back with the D twenty proceeds. You know, and there are some things that we want to look at like the armory and others to make it as cost effective as possible. We asked you asked that we ensure that resources are available to assist staff and build capacity and to identify and invest in equipment and facilities to increase long term operational efficiencies. We're looking at things like electric plan, review equipment makes it easier for our businesses and easier for staff along with some additional printers and scanner. You know, use technology where appropriate and right technology. These days that's computers. Unfortunately, we have to upgrade the number of licenses and other things that we have. And we just have a few other action items there. On financial strategies, your notes, you want us to maintain and develop responsible reserves generally and for unfunded uses, continue conservative general fiscal strategy, address unfunded mandates, pre prepared for changing economic conditions, invest modestly to achieve future efficiencies. Look at grants and records management and public and private partnerships. So there are some reserves that we just didn't make it into that tier one, tier two. They're I'm they're in more of the two twos. So we have words like explore and consider funding section one fifteen trust for pension. Consider additional payments for unfunded pension liabilities. What we hope to do is look for opportunities where maybe we achieve some savings somewhere else, some unexpected money to start funding those pension liability holes so that to help us into the future. We're going to continue our conservative fiscal strategies, looking at our reserves. Certainly, you know, part of we talked about our equipment reserves and our replacement reserves. And we're going to continue with with the down the path that we're going. And the last key focus area was transparency and accountability. And the group wanted us to consider technology for transparency and accountability reporting for the community website, share more information, improve responses to requests for records management and reporting for the annual tax measure. We're proposing to use technol- general funds for some transparency and technology. Transparency and accountability, things like a website overhaul. We don't have anybody dedicated to updating and maintaining our website. Each department tries to do it as they can. When they remember there's a lot of old information on there. There's a lot of information that's no longer correct. There's a lot of new information that should be on there. We do our best, but we don't have somebody to kind of guide that. We are proposing a adding a position with general funds that would help shepherd all of the website updates, work with each of the departments to make sure that we're more on time. They would also be able to update our social media and help out with events. So that's kind of a a position that, okay, we we can do a lot of things with that. We're also proposing additional funds to update our website. We had set aside some funds in the last budget. They weren't enough to actually do an overhaul of the website so that it is easier for everybody to maintain and go through. So we're looking at that. Records management. Looking at additional laser fish licenses. These are critically important. All of our records are deposited in laser fish. When the public or staff goes to look something up and try and find records, you often now get all the licenses are being used. Please come try again at a different time. So we need more licenses to actually do that and then for can deposit more things in there. And so that is the section on fiscal and infrastructure efficiency and sustainability. I'd be happy to answer any questions there.
Michelle, um, for when we look in the back at the funds, you know, kind of estimated loosely, estimated and allocated.
Yes.
D twenty and then we've got tier one and tier one means the year one to two action items.
Yes.
And then tier two is the beyond two year.
Is beyond two year is the, hey, let's look for opportunities, whether it be grants or or something like that, or you know, one time savings where we can do the UAL things. So those are in the tier two. They don't. We didn't feel like they fit easily within the available funds right now, either in D twenty or tier one.
Okay, understand because in the and so this is just a a little thing, but in the narrative, we've got the developed responsible reserves for unfunded liabilities. So one fifteen UAL under one to two year, but it really belongs under the two plus, right?
Yeah. That's where we we used words like explore because we were. My thought is if we ended up and it looks like at the end of the year, we're going to be, you know, three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand under budget like we've seen in the past, unfortunately, due to vacancies. Why don't we take that one time money and try and put it in there even in these one or two? So it wouldn't necessarily be a budgeted item, but something that we're going to look for in the next two years to start being able to fund some of that.
Okay, that makes sense. So it's not a priority in the next two years, but we're just like a lot of these things sort of like on the lookout like, oh, well, if that's an easy thing to do.
Yes.
I do want to make it clear to the public too, that when we talk about the UAL or the the section one fifteen trust, this is not the twenty.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council for our city manager? Council member funk.
Just one in the plans as we're doing the major building replacement and planning for fire station number one and doing other work at public buildings, will we be considering opportunities for electric vehicle infrastructure? Because we, you know, as as the auto industry and and other manufacturers move towards electric vehicles, we're going to want to be able to support that and take advantage of those cost savings for city vehicles.
Certainly, we don't have any of those details right now, but if the council desires, we can absolutely look at those opportunities.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Saying done, let's go ahead and move on to our next section.
Okay. The next section is ensuring public safety and providing exceptional city services. I think we lost our services. Yes. The first key focus area was staffing and it was really about hire, grow and retain optimize prop processes and and let's make sure that we're staffed well enough to to do the jobs that we're trying to do. Hire and retain an adequate number of staff to achieve our priorities. Obviously, we're we're not a well staffed city. We do a lot with we're scrappy, as the mayor sometimes says, we do a lot with a little. And there are a lot of needs that, you know, we just can't fit into this current budget. But we are recommending that police staffing would be a huge thing. And and while we couldn't get everything that they certainly hope to see, what we are recommending in this plan or as part of this two year plan, hiring for patrol officers and one dispatcher. This would greatly reduce, if not eliminate it, the number of times that we're down to three sworn officers. If we could go ahead and hire that. We're also looking at keeping our two battalion chiefs and the safer grant position. If you remember, we have a grant for one of the fire floor positions. And we had just put in and said, okay, we'll fund the battalion chiefs for a two year period. But if we don't have additional funding, they would go away. We are proposing to use D twenty funds to to hire that additional firefighter that we would lose normally with the safer grant going away and and do that reclass to the to the battalion chiefs. And those are some of the D twenty things. Under hiring for other city staff, general fund type of thing, we have just that one position, the the website, social media, events type person that's going to be a huge help both to basically making sure that the information we have out there is accurate and on time. And so it's going to help all of us and help all of the departments. And then we are proposing to add a little bit extra time to central reception. That's a part time position. We'd like to add an extra part time position to make sure we have coverage all the way down there. We do talk about completing an essential essentialism evaluation of each department. This is an outside consultant. We have done some things over the last two years to try and streamline processes. Have talked to a number of other cities, but really feel if we're going to do this, that we're going to need to 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 hire somebody that can really just dig into things. A big one under this was provide competitive salary benefits and appropriate classifications for all employees. We talked a lot during D twenty about we're losing employees to other cities, particularly in police and dispatch. But all planners, public works, people, finance, people, you name it. We are at the bottom of the list as far as pay and have a hard time attracting and retaining qualified employees. And so this was a a large priority. So there are funds for D twenty put a put aside for that. We kind of bunched everything together, retention, training, reclassifications, recognition, salaries, all of those strategies towards helping hire, grow and retain employees. We have a a large swag on. You know, we talked about hiring for heart, providing training, explore a wider city employee recognition program, working to ensure that employees have the tools necessary to do their job. You know, some of those things for D twenty are are increasing the fire operating budget and making sure that they have money to continue the evacuation software that that we just implemented and some emergency planning money to to try and make sure that we we can do what we need to do. And then obviously, long term, this is will always be a challenge for us and make sure that we have a long term strategy to keep employees' salaries and benefits competitive with the market. with the market. Will be there. The unhoused population is the next area. You know, there was a lot of things under unhoused, some of them you know, related to community impacts from people living. Where they were never intended to have people live and some of them related to the human impacts of of having people live where they were never intended to live. So, you know, the notes to consider were routine cleanups, training of available resources for staff and community. Strong relationships with regional partners and increased support of the cat team. We did have some funds of D twenty going towards cleanup of problemless problem homeless encampments. Trying to address those areas in there where the encampment is is causing other problems, whether it be on private property or litter problems are getting too big or too permanent or or any of those things. We certainly want to work with echo and outreach to to provide alternative places for the people to go when we do do those cleanups. I want to skip down to the established needed outreach for underrepresented individual residents. We called it, we like the name of that. This is actually a Jerry Rangel and Chief Masterson name of our team. This is intended to to support our residents, our people that we have here in town that are part of who we are. It's, they are a part of our community and we want to make sure that they know they're a part of our community. So we are looking as part of that, our team having a police officer. Mental health support. We have a halftime psych tech, but doing an additional contract with mental health or hiring our own mental health professional here at the city and expanding some contracting with some expanded outreach. The idea is is that these will be a strong team to address mental health issues, crisis issues. Addiction, community impacts. All of those where the police have been called in in the past, hey, nobody else can take care of this. Can you come do this? Let's have a team to do that. Let's go out and do outreach so that we know the residents and we have relationships with them. The idea is also having them be as part of the police department. That certainly they can reinforce all of the training and the trauma-informed. You know, response and the crisis intervention response. They can be there and build that and continue to build that in our very compassionate police department. So we think this is an exciting exciting thing that we would we would do. We also have some money that could go here or under downtown for creek cleanup, trimming, weeding, eliminating poison oak. Basically lifting some things up, which we think will help with some of the the trash problems and and some of that. And then obviously supporting non-partner, non-governmental agencies, Echo Outreach does an amazing job. And others. We are also looking to implement a trash pickup pilot program for various areas of homeless encampments and look at that. And community engagement again. We talk about, you know, our team. We are looking very forward to holding more public safety outreach events again. We loved our national night out, our fire. I forget what it's called, but their their thing plus coffee with a cop. We, those were great opportunities. We're looking forward to putting those back in place now that COVID is over. And then, of course, obviously, our website and having a website that we actually have somebody that has time to to keep that up to date and work with police and fire and others to do that. So that is what we have under exceptional public safety and city services.
Well, I want to say job well done to Director Rangel and Chief Masterson for that for that name, our team. I've never loved cat team because it's community action team team. And so it's kind of like when someone says three P M. In the afternoon, I'm like, ah, so, but I think our team is something that we're really owning as a Tascadaro. I think that's wonderful. So thank you to both of you. I will look to council members if there are any questions. Council member funk.
I do, of course, have questions. I waited long to see if anyone else did. On the, starting with the the first section of this in the in the in the budgeting for the fire. Do we didn't talk about, we talked about sustaining the in the ongoing use of the the Zone Haven program that identifies how do people get out. But are, do we have enough funding planned in there to make sure that we can can create and and communicate a robust evacuation strategy that includes our traffic safety analysis and the kinds of things to know. You know, which intersections to block off and and at what point can you have people evacuating from the lower end of Santa Lucia without blocking the folks from the upper end of of Santa Lucia from getting out?
Yes, we still have funds that will carry over that are part of the the funds you set aside at the last action plan where all of that work is under contract right now is being performed as as we speak. There are some funds to continue some, you know, robust communication plans on know your zone. I'm zone two. By the way, everybody should know their zone. And to try and keep that and to look for some ways. Obviously. You know, there's, there's different degrees. We think this is a manageable degree of it. We could do more. We could do less, but this was the one in working with the executive management team that we felt we had enough resources to to get quite a bit of the word out on just things like the billboard or or looking at posting signs and doing some of that. So yes, we're we're confident in this level.
Okay. And then on the our team. The one of the the challenges that happens is when people are in mental health crisis often is that you call the police because that's who's there twenty-four seven. And you and the situation needs a response. But but someone showing up. An armed person with a badge may in some may elicit a response that makes the situation worse just because the the person in crisis has had other experiences that may be traumatic. With law enforcement or may have fears or or problems there. Have we looked at the opportunities for first responders to mental health, being mental health teams and not necessarily being someone with the badge?
Absolutely. I mean, that is the whole idea of the our team. Is to send somebody that's the right response for what they're talking about. There are times that that whether we like it or not, we are going to have to send in somebody with that badge that's been informed by that mental health person and has a great understanding of it. Just because we, you know, you can't send somebody in that's going to put them in imminent danger or some of that. But by having that team, by having those relationships with some of those residents and and knowing them and and knowing, okay. You know, Bob, you know, has a really negative reaction to police officers. I think I'll do better with him. Hey, you know, Joe has a really positive and a good relationship with Officer Smith. Let's go have Officer Smith talk to him while he's in crisis. I think this is going to provide us some of those opportunities.
Great, thank you. And to be clear. You know, we have people with with mental health challenges and some of them are unhoused, but many of them are not.
Absolutely.
This is addressing this throughout the community. And then lastly, on mental health, one of the things that we talked about in the context of our strategic planning was not just that we had that the that the emergency responders in general need that need greater capacity to respond on with mental health expertise. But also that their jobs are really stressful and they need mental health support.
Right.
And I didn't see in here overt mental health support for the police and for the fire department. But have, are we going to be able to use in the teamwork with these new with expanded capacity of mental health with the our team to also think about how we keep the the fire and police personnel supported in their mental health. We need to invest in our the well-being of our staff and we need them to know that.
Yeah.
Be sufficiently there with this.
I I don't know that this level of mental health psych tech. It could be of help. Or it it may not be, but I agree a hundred percent in knowing that we need to be there to support all of our first responders. And and help them in any way. Certainly, I see this team member and this team in general being there to help inform, educate, build a culture and build upon the very compassionate culture that we have for our police department right now to make sure that they understand a little bit better mental health crisis. We do have some mental health support. We have talked about this a little bit as a team on how can we augment that? And if do we need to? We do have professional psychologists, but you know, okay, debriefs often happen in big groups. How do we encourage people to to reach out in individuals? Because our police officers, our first responders, our firefighters certainly deal with a lot of very difficult things on a day-to-day basis, and we want to make sure that's there. We'll continue some of that conversation and we do believe this will accommodate those types of needs, what we're proposing.
Thank you.
Council member for both.
Yes, I wanted to ask. In regards to the our teams. You know, I think the need for or the expectation, you know, that our society has gotten to where we expect police to be able to do everything for everybody. You know, and to quickly decide whether they're needed as a you know, in a direct to a violent situation or in a warrior mode, are they needed to, you know, be a counselor or they needed to be a rescuer? You know, they have to respond to everything and that's why it's an extremely difficult job. What I'm concerned about here is social services have been the province of the counties in California. Not the cities. And that I think we all would agree, you know, it sounds like a good idea to have somebody you know, coming along who not an officer might be better able to handle certain situations. But what are we, and I'm sure the county would love for every city to hire more and more mental health professionals to deal with folks. What are we doing in terms of seeking that kind of funding or getting the county to provide the that kind of stuff from social services? Because ultimately they could save money in other areas of social service if they had essentially first responder social services. And so I'm a little concerned about the city jumping too deeply in and replacing the county as the provider of of social services.
So in my discussions with the county. I don't see the county being able to provide the level of support that we are hoping and looking for. Right now, when somebody is in mental health crisis. We can call and if there is somebody available. They will send people up or or respond. But and maybe the chief can answer better than I can. It's not always timely. It's not always there. They don't have the Tascadaro relationship. There are just some things missing. Certainly, there are some grant funds that are opening up more and more for those that are experiencing homelessness and mental health crisis at the same time. And we might be able to piggyback on some of those grants. But but we do envision this a little bit broader. Chief, did you want to add anything?
Actually, I think you covered it pretty well, Rochelle, but yeah. Yeah, I would definitely prefer to have local people dealing with local people. It's a much better relationship and they tend to know us. And like you said, Mr. Borbo. We deal with so many different things. We wear so many different hats that we have to be pretty well-rounded. And we're looking at more training to really enhance our officers' abilities.
Thank you, chief. Council member Borbo, did that answer your question? Maybe not in the way that you want, but did it?
No, that's fine. No, that's fine. It answered my question. Thank you.
And council member Dara, is any questions on this before we move to the next topic?
No, no questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on.
Last section. Quality of life. Basically, we're looking for things to do. A lot of that was already covered in those recreation and events. There was a a strong interest to continue a lot of the events that we've seen in the past. Certainly, we will do so as we can in a safe manner. We do have to follow guidelines. There is one thing under things to do. We put fund lake quality program to mitigate algae blooms using some general fund. As you know, we've been putting some dye to help prevent some of the algae blooms and fish die-offs and some algae side if necessary to do that. It's very expensive. That's not in our parks budget. So we are proposing to fund those out of general funds. We on welcoming and inclusive, we want to work with and can support a lot of our community partners and volunteers to advance diversity, inclusion, community. Beautification, I know those are kind of different things. We are looking at a program to facilitate volunteer opportunities, more creek cleanups, more of those types of things. And a lot of the stuff, you know, that we're talking about being welcome, inclusive is is covered under the other things and and things that we already do. And last but not least, we have supporting families. You know, a lot of this is supporting a lot of the organizations that are out there such as Echo Link, Tascadaro Unified School District. You know, encourage reasonable organizations to bring attention to childcare needs. Educate staff and community members of available ability and mental health resources. We plan on working with the county on that. We already have a lot of that information, but broadening it, broadening which of our staff members are have that stuff. I mean, it'd be nice if our parks workers and others have some some information on that. And we always welcome any organization that serves the community if they want to let us know and and educate us, we can, we can help make sure that we have that information if we see people with those needs or things. And then I had added explore community choice energy in February twenty twenty-two here. But of course, we can keep it in both places. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on that last section.
Thank you. Any council questions on this section? I think I'm seeing council member Borbo.
Yeah, Rochelle, under quality of life, year one to two action items. Discuss long-term capital needs the zoo and the viability of continuing A Z A accreditation. When would you look to for that to be a council level discussion? I assume you talked about for that to be a council level discussion? I assume you've talked about it to some degree at staff.
Yeah.
When you look for that to be a council discussion, because there are items in the general fund tier one that kind of involve spending in that regard.
Yeah, the the action items in tier one are are not necessarily about accreditation or long term, you know, health of the zoo. Those are kind of the keeping the place afloat and not falling apart around of our ears. Unfortunately, because we have been so fiscally strapped, the parks and zoo, we tended to not fund any supplemental requests or budget increases or anything for, I don't know, I've been here 25 years, you know, for a long time. Unfortunately, the cost of meat and other food, animal food, continue to go up, and we've been ignoring it and putting it in our putting our head in the ground. So this is basically acknowledging what we've been spending. Or or you start shutting down the zoo. You can't really just say I'm not going to feed the animals. Same thing with some of the electricity costs, the freezer and the electrical. I will tell you that the electrical has started several small fires. We we fixed that, but now it just turns off the breaker fairly often, including on freezing nights when you have animals, tropical animals. That's not a good thing. So these are absolute have tos. But I do see the the discussion happening in the next year. We have some exhibits, some bigger exhibits, our FUSA and our Lema exhibit that are held together with duct tape and baling wire. The animal's health is fine, but they have fishing game, noncompliant construction materials such as creosote poles. They have rotting wood and and other things that that need to be addressed, and we need to decide, okay, if we build rebuild those exhibits, are we going to build them up to AZA standards? Which really takes the visitor experience in account in addition to the animal experience, both are equally as important as opposed to some of our exhibits that really are animal experience focused rather than the red panda. The red panda is very immersive for the visitor where you go through the bamboo forest and the, you know, the the trees of Southeast Asia. Then it opens up onto the red panda exhibit where the red pandas and the munchak deer are there. You know, that's an AZA type of exhibit. If you had just had the exhibit where you looked over the fence at the red pandas and the munchak deer, the the animals have the same, you know, experience, but the people have a different experience. So we're going to have to talk about that.
Any other council questions? Charles, did you still have more? No. Okay, Councilmember Funk.
As we're working with our events and supporting these opportunities for people in the community to do fun things and connect with each other, can we pursue continued opportunities to add more diversity to those events so that we are attracting people into our community and celebrating aspects of our community that might be less visible? Or even that, you know, and you know, a decade or two, a few decades ago would not have been able to live here or by property here.
We can certainly look for opportunities and, you know, if there are groups or or people that are interested in holding those types of events, we certainly want to reach out and see how we can help and help make to make it a successful event. We just need to make sure that it's viable and and we have enough critical mass to make it a successful event. But yes, absolutely.
Sure. And then with regard to childcare, can we, in the course of the general plan update, will we be able to look specifically at childcare in terms of where child, the zoning categories, the the requirements that those have, the the extent to which we provide some supports that we talked earlier about, you know, restaurants might need some help with their sewer costs. Well, there may be some other things that we need to do to consider childcare as an essential piece of the business infrastructure, if you will, and the infrastructure supporting our families and the community that makes it, that helps us attract businesses and helps us support a quality of life for our families.
I I think we can absolutely talk about those as part of the our programs. Phil, maybe if you're there, we can do that. You can hop on and help me, but certainly, if you guys, what we need is for people, including the council, to bring that up as we're looking at general plan scoping, as we're looking at and discussing the existing programs and where does that fit? And what do you want that program to be? Phil, do you have stuff to add?
Um, yeah, sorry, I was tuned out for a second. I was just swallowing some food and can you repeat the question if you're after?
Sure. They're looking, can we discuss how to assist childcare as part of the general plan and zoning to make sure that we have or don't have artificial barriers or problems to
Yeah.
introducing more childcare or people developing childcare.
That's that's what I thought I heard, which is kind of, it's kind of a complex question. And it is tough to answer. So I think there's a lot of different things that we can look at through the entire general plan process, but it really comes down to taking an inventory and looking at the barriers to what's there right now in terms of supporting childcare and supporting some of these land uses. Is there barriers? Is there? Is there enough building stock? Is there enough land to to do that? And so that's when we do our complete general plan update, where you take a look at all of our zoning inventory and what we have and see where those opportunities are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Director. And are you complete Councilmember Funk? All right. And I will ask any other council questions on this item, because what I plan to do right now is I want us to take just a brief break. And then when we come back, we'll go right into public comment on this item. I'll ask first for the city clerk to read us the emails, and then we will go to the callers in the webinar. So any last questions before we take a brief break? All right, I'm seeing none. It is, I have 7:38, so why don't we come back at 7:45? Sound good? All right. All right, let's go ahead and bring everyone back. All right, I'm still still looking for Charles. There he is. All right, Luke, can you hear me?
Yep.
All right, are we back and going again?
We're going.
All right, thank you. So the council has just returned from a brief break, and we are going into public comment on item C1. And so I will start by asking our city clerk, Laura Christiansen, to read those emails that we've received for this item.
The first one is from Zachariah Jackson, the president of the Atascadero Professional Firefighters, L. 3600. Regarding the draft strategic plan and draft action plan study session. Dear City Council, the Atascadero Professional Firefighters Local 3600 would like to extend our gratitude to the community for the support of tax measure D20. This new funding will allow the fire department to replace aging and inadequate emergency equipment and fire apparatus, maintain a grant funded firefighter position and replacement of fire station one. These are all critical needs of the department to continue to serve Atascadero, the community we all love. Firefighters have experienced several instances in the last year in which failing equipment and operative fire engines and unsafe conditions in an aging fire station presented a challenge to providing expected emergency services as well as causing near miss injuries to our personnel. The supplemental budget request that Fire Chief Casey Bryson has submitted address many of these pressing concerns for your firefighters to continue to provide the level of service we all expect and Atascadero residents deserve. We fully support Fire Chief Bryson in his plan to move the fire department forward by replacing inadequate and failing equipment, replacing aging and unreliable fire apparatus, improving unsafe conditions within the fire stations and increasing safety to move closer to the industry standards. It is our hope that we will continue to prioritize public safety and essential infrastructure with D20 funding as promised to the citizens that voted to pass the tax measure. We want to thank the city council for their continued service to our community, and we hope to work together in providing a safer Atascadero for all of us. Thank you and stay safe. The next email is from Daniel Rich. I respectfully suggest the following priorities. One, support upgrading the fire station on trafficway. Two, support Echo in its effort to assist the homeless with the work they do to provide temporary shelter, meals, and also to assist citizens in obtaining permanent housing. Three, funding and staff to further explore community choice energy to more fully understand future needs and priorities. Four, investigate police department needs, especially as it relates to adequate salaries and staffing levels. Explore adding resources to deal with the public's mental health issues. Thank you for your consideration. This one's from Monica Schechter. Dear City Council members, I would like to highlight three important budget priorities while you consider how to allocate the D20 funds. One, I'm a strong supporter of the community choice energy, 3CE, and would like to advocate for a staff study in early 2022. There needs to be a budget line for the staff study of 3CE. Atascadero has refused to direct city staff to do a report on 3CE. One of the few cities to ignore the benefits and savings 3CE has to offer. The Paso Robles City Council voted unanimously unanimously to embrace 3CE for their city last year. Two, homelessness, treatment of homeless and supporting Echo, a proven entity for temporary housing, matching emphasis. matching and facilitating training for reentry into the world of work, healthcare, and permanent housing. The city needs to continue and expand its supportive Echo financially and with their support for Echo and emergency warming shelters, January to March each year. Three, input in how the increased funding for the police is spent, a national and local issue. Expand training for police staff to address mental health issues, de-escalating volatile situations, so level of force is moderated to the situation for the entire community. Thanks for representing the citizens of Atascadero and the residents of North County. Kathleen Goble, I'm happy to see that the city is prioritizing the police department staffing and the fire department needs with D20 funding. Thank you for making public safety a priority. Christina Azdal Cisneros, greetings City Council and City staff. First, I want to thank you for your hard work compiling the strategic plan and budget priorities and for going above and beyond to include the public in these conversations. I observed and participated in many of these meetings and I always felt like my presence and perspective were valued. Top of mind for me is improving the dynamic between APD officers and our unhoused population. My hope is that the Atascadero Police Department earmarks funds for a cat team or our team. I understand that the APD has been understaffed. I ask that when the staffing holes have been filled, one officer will be paired with a mental health professional to better meet the needs of our unhoused population. Speaking of mental health care, mental health services should be available for our community members as well as for our officers. I also ask that APD mandates officers take a crisis intervention course so they're better equipped to effectively respond to our community members in distress. In the strategic priorities under unhoused population, there seems to be an emphasis on clearing people out and vegetation management. I think the priority should always be finding people housing and services. And services should be rendered by people without a gun whenever possible. Thank you for your time and consideration. The next email is, I'll reread this one from Dan Cook. Council members, please reserve the necessary monies to fund a staff report on community choice energy. This study has been put off until early next year due to budgetary issues. And now is the time to provide the funds needed to complete this very important staff report. Thank you. Jean Pedego, hello, we would like to see the following. A Community Choice Energy 3CE report. Find the funds and let's get on board like every other city has and enjoy the savings and benefits. Can you please address how the increase for police funding will be utilized? We need expanded training for our police staff to address mental health issues. Send along social workers for certain calls. More training on de-escalating volatile situations. Thank you. The next one is from Austin Path. Atascadero City Council, I would like to see these two matters important to me added as agenda items to be accomplished in the near future. 3CE, Community Choice Energy, which would give Atascadero residents a choice in utility providers. The city to move forward as quickly as possible with an SRSO or EMO to protect senior mobile homeowners living in mobile home parks in Atascadero. Thank you. And those are all the comments we've received.
Thank you very much. All right, we will move to the webinar into the phone and I will note that for those of you who haven't spoken yet, if you want to speak on 3CE, you're more than welcome to know that we have put that here into the plan. And so if your comment is to put it into the plan, it is here. But feel free, you're welcome to say anything, but just know that we have done that and are following through on our commitment to you. So I will start with the webinar and then we'll go to the phone. So I'm looking first to Marty Brown and then we will follow that with Heather Brant.
Good evening. My comment is going to be on fiscal infrastructure and reliability and business infrastructure. I have spoken to you about signing on with 3CE Renewable Energy several times and I've attended the study session. It would attract new businesses and help existing ones save on electric bills. Plus, 3CE sets aside a percentage of its revenue annually for local programs. Some examples are electric vehicle incentives, EV charging stations, community solar projects, electrifying public transportation, and built environmental environment sectors. Microgrids for interconnectivity between businesses and in schools to deal with power outages on the grid. The estimated amount dedicated for energy programs in fiscal year 2021 is $6.5 million. 3CE is accountable to the communities it serves instead of investors. Plus, it would help reach our climate action plan goals. And I'm delighted that you're going to agendize this in February. Although it's hopefully the offer that they made to waiver the price of the CPOC and PG&E costs if we sign on by August. I hope that that would hold through until we have our agenda in February. I appreciate your, your time and consideration of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Heather Branton.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, we can.
Okay, there are two of us on this computer, but with different comments. Is that okay?
Sure thing.
Okay. My name is Heather Branton. As pastor of Community Church of Atascadero and a city resident, I'm both impressed and appreciative of the work that City Council and especially the amazing staff are doing to solicit in public input into the strategic planning. I would like to encourage the following areas be strongly supported. First, I believe it is important to support our police. Increased wages can help with retention, but it is also important that we provide them with the skills and support for the wide ranging demands placed on them. Increased training can give them skills and broader understanding to respond to mental health crises in ways that better de-escalate the situations and acknowledge the stresses that family members experience. A multidisciplinary response team would be better used to provide expertise that the police cannot and should not be expected to have. After all, not every response needs to be handled with a badge, as it's been said. Also, our police and firefighters are under tremendous stress. Who cares for those who care for us? I believe it is important to provide psychosocial support for them. Perhaps we could establish a team of retired mental health professionals dedicated to the mental and emotional health of our police and firefighters. Third, as with the rest of the country, we have challenges for how to best address homelessness in our city. How we respond to and interact with these fellow members of our community is really a commentary on us, not them. So how might we, how might we expand affordable housing options? What do we do with folks who have no place to be when it is cold and wet or extremely hot or smoky? How can we provide public areas that give space for the actual diversity of our community in ways that feel non-threatening? These are important questions to address as we plan the kind of city we are going into. Again, thank you so much for the amazing work that you do.
And I'm, and I'm Jean Miller.
Hi, Jean.
Also a resident. And I'm not sure whether this falls under being a welcoming inclusive place or whether it falls under events and other things, but I think Atascadero would be a lot friendlier to both locals and visitors if there were public restrooms available, especially in our business district. And as we look at increasing the number of food trucks and events and so forth, I think that's an additional reason that we should be considering public restrooms. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
And next I see Ellen Bayrow followed by Tasia Trevino.
Hello, this is my first Zoom council meeting. So exciting. Appreciate the opportunity to speak and it was a huge report, so I'm just gonna, I kind of dotted notes as I was going along, so it may be some repeating, so bear with me on that. I was part of the, part of the outreach and I definitely support large chunks of the money going to staff our police and fire. But I do have some concerns of how that money is spent. One is I would like to see that our police and fire both are mandated to have crisis training. This is incredibly important that we take care of them. So again, we will retain our employees. And then there was a, there's a phrase called hire for heart. That sounds good, but I would like to know what that definition is. And to make sure that we're hiring, that we are hiring for diversity. We are a very white community and if we are going to be welcoming to people coming to our community, we need to have diversity being represented in, in our staffing. Also, instead of just hiring more people in cars driving around, I would like to see a new position that focuses on, you know, a more non-traditional role to help with community interaction, whether that's, you know, policemen on bicycles or people who are just on foot versus being in a, in a car. And I know there's a lot of fear out there about things like mass shootings and things like that. And I would like to see, you know, if someone is monitoring some of our social media and, you know, works with regional agencies to make sure that we are addressing some of those concerns. Also on that safety list was the police department's explorer program. And I want to encourage that we don't limit ourselves to just friends of families, but to make sure that we also have diversity in those participants because a lot of those explorers can become future officers. I'm running out of time here. Unhoused. It's important, you know, yes, to keep our creeks clear, but also to make sure that we're providing alternative housing options for all different kinds of people. In the downtown, I'll support on public bathrooms. And it is, you know, I believe there's a California regulation that parks must have bathrooms. And there are options for self-cleaning toilets in different cities. I also would be, what I can't read my notes here. Oh, I just wanted to say in my last couple of seconds here that most cities do have electrical vehicle infrastructure for charging. And oftentimes when I travel, I go to people's city halls for charging. So this is just another opportunity to offer a service for people. So I would encourage that as well. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate you.
Thank you. And next up is Tasia Trevino followed by Lee Perkins.
Hi, I'm Tasha. I'm so thankful to our City Council and City staff and community members who have participated in the study sessions and in really just devoting their time to our city. And it's clear from the, from the priorities here that, that a lot of thought and consideration went into this. I wanted to offer something, the city worker that Rochelle mentioned, that would help with the website and events and social media. I would love to have that person be perhaps bilingual Spanish speaker to reach out and engage with our Spanish speaking community. And then I wanted to just push back a little bit on the order of the priorities under our unhoused population section. I noticed that the first probably priority seems to be sweeps, basically. And even the language feels a little, a little prickly. It's problem encampments, right? You know, but these are folks that have ended up in situations that are part of a massive problem of inequality. And of course, our city has to approach it sort of on its own and to speak to Councilman Verbeau's point, you know, like this is a much bigger problem than just the city of Atascadero. But I think we do have an opportunity to, to, to show ourselves as a community that supports our unhoused population. So that being said, I would love to see the bottom priority of look for opportunities and grants to provide resources move up to the top. And I would love to see some specificity in the implement strategy to encourage unhoused to reduce trash and litter. More public trash cans, public restrooms, I think would really help with that. And I did appreciate that there was sort of attention paid to how we as a city sort of think about interacting with all the members of our community, including our unhoused population. I did also want to push back on an armed officer being part of our team. It's not very common form practice probably to have a badge and a gun showing up. I, Councilwoman Funk addressed this. But I do, I do really like the direction and I do love the thought being put into, you know, looking to mental health and addiction substance abuse issues as, as a part of solving this problem. Thank you so much for allowing me time to speak and thanks for the counsel again.
Thank you. Next, Lee Perkins followed by Lisa Kenya, Kenya.
Good evening, Mayor Marino, City Council staff and Zoomers. I, first I want to compliment the city manager Michelle on her knowledgeable and comprehensive reporting. It's pretty amazing. I want to piggyback on the last speaker about the need for someone bilingual in the fire department and the police department. And I'm really glad to hear that Atascadero now has our team because it's, it sounds as though you've really expanded the metal, mental health response. Besides mental health issues always being with us, COVID has really exasperated the financial stress and fear in our community. As you know, one of the issues that was brought up in the public D20 sessions was for the City Council to agendize the community choice or also known as 3CE with a staff report. And we were advised that at this time, the city does not, had this time, the city has staff shortages and the cost of studying 3CE was moved to early 2022. I'm one of many in the city who believes our residents deserve to be able to choose if they want community choice energy, which would save individual residents monthly and save the city thousands in energy costs. Based on contact with other cities that have embraced 3CE, it is a myth that it is difficult to opt out of it. To ensure the city, to ensure that the City Council revisits the community choice, I ask that there be a budget designated to support the staff and, and the report next year. With time allotted and costs covered, it is assured the city will get a staff report and then let the community of Atascadero decide if they want 3CE. And thank you for your time and all your work.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Lisa Kenya followed by V Pierce.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, yes, my name is Lisa Kenya and I would like to discuss issues with mental health. I think it's imperative that our first responders are CIT trained to help deal with the mental health issues that they respond to. I also think would be great if we had a mental health caseworker assigned to, assigned to each of our teams in each shift to show up. Like has been said, it's not always a good idea to have a gun show up on a mental health case call, which I can personally attest to that. I would also ask that our county start a committee for mental health. That committee for mental health should be professionals and family members as well to help advise our first responders and our communities as well. Mental health is important. And I just think our first responders definitely need more training, mental health training and mental health teams to also show up that don't have guns. I have sent our police chief several programs that have been successful in several different areas of our country and that are federally funded by grants. I hope you will look into this and get back with me on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is V Pierce.
Public Health CIT Caseworkers Committee.
Do we have V Pierce?
Hello? Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Oh, great. Thank you. My name is V Pierce and I wanted to thank you for giving me the opportunity to be part of the listening sessions and the strategic planning sessions. I wanted to speak on the public safety strategic priority and specifically on the unhoused population focus area. and specifically, um, on the unhoused population, um, focused area. What I noticed during the, uh, sessions I attended, um, was that there was a lack of uh, participation from some of the nonprofit organizations in our community that work with, um, this population. Um, and I was, I've been doing some reading on the issue of homelessness. Um, because I don't feel that I'm an expert by any means, but, um, I wanted to try to understand the issue more. And, uh, I've read Evicted by Matthew Desmond and have attended some webinars from the League of Women Voters of Slow County. Um, and I've learned that it's a really complicated issue, um, trying to address homelessness. Um, you know, we, we need to look at prevention. We need to look at outreach and intervention. Um, how to provide support to people. Um, there's mental health issues and substance abuse issues. Um, so it's, it's really complicated. Um, what I see in the, um, in the strategic plan is that, um, putting the cleaning of encampments first sends a wrong message about how we deal with this issue as a city. I think, um, I, I would, I would like to see us look at more long-term solutions, uh, to make gainful impact on this issue. Um, I think, um, just going back to the cleanup of the encampment, it, when you push people, um, when you clean up the encampment, it pushes people elsewhere temporarily. Um, it causes more trauma when they lose their belongings and it doesn't really build trust and relationships. Um, which, you know, we, we, that's how we, that's what we need to do in order to reach out to these people and get them the help that they need to be, um, functioning and, um, uh, people who provide, um, good services in our, in our community. Um, the people who are most effective are the people who have been in that situation, who've walked those, those shoes, who, who have been in those shoes. And they are the perfect people to do outreach, to kind of help people who, um, you know, in the future, um, get out of these situations. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that strategic area, um, for the unhoused population was something that I was really striking to me when I looked at it. It just didn't seem to be the right message when we want to create a warm and welcoming Atascadero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, V. Um, and next is Brenda May, our citizen of the year.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you all for, for your dedication. And I think you're, you're all amazing. Thank you so much for your dedication. Um, I again, thank you for having the community energy coming up. It is two thousand twenty-two, but it's coming. So at least that's there. And I have to again, have to chime in with, um, the mental health issue. Um, I feel like our, our police are overworked. We don't have enough in the first place. You know, it's, it's a hard job they do and, and I appreciate all, all of them. I mean, it's a hard job. I feel like there needs to be a mental health response team rather than trying to train our police who are already overworked. It was a good idea to have one police officer work with, with a team of mental health response. Um, but I feel like we need to really, really do something about this issue. There's been some things happen that are not good and guns drawn and things that were really hard on families. And also the support for Echo and the warming shelter, um, since the warming shelter was at our church this year. Um, help from the city would have really been nice, just some type of help and support. And that's all I have to say, but I do thank you all. You're amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. May. Uh, let's see. I don't have any other webinar hands raised at the moment. I see a hand raised on the phone. Um, Luke, and if anyone is on the phone and hasn't yet raised their hand, I believe you can do that by pressing star nine.
Yeah, we have two callers on the phone. Our first caller is Brenda Mack.
Hello, um, I wanted to speak on the mental health issue. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Ms. Mack.
Okay, okay. So I am in agreement, um, with, uh, having a mental health team. Not just for our policemen, but I get, I also for our firemen, because we forget, they get called out for these calls with the homeless, with other people aftermath of accidents and things like that. They also need mental health support. I will also say that the state is making movement to do things of getting ground teams out there for mental health, like we're doing, trying, they're trying to do peer, uh, certification under the supervision of a social worker to come out to be working the community. Uh, as for homelessness, the direction the states are, the states appears to be going is to re, to address our contributive living shelters such as Echo, Echo, effective for the homeless. Um, they are effective for some segment of the population. They are not for others. And so that needs to be addressed also. I will also add in the emergency plan, since we are in a drought and we're more than likely are going to have forest fires, it would be nice this year if the homeless people have a place to go and all that smoke. I was homeless during all that smoke and my lungs still appear to be permanently damaged. That's just a thought. Other than that, I really, um, appreciate people trying to work together. And one final thing, I saw the police car with a flat tire. Please make sure they have plenty of tires. Thank you.
Thank you. Luke, do we have any other callers on the phone?
Yes, we have one more caller, Danielle Johnston.
Hi, I'm Danielle Johnston. You know, I'm just calling in to say that, um, I think the funds are being distributed are pretty fair right now. But I'm not sure what community power has to do with D twenty-five. So I'm just a little confused on that and, um, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
And is that our last caller, Luke?
That was our last caller.
Okay. Um, I do see Marty Brown's hand up again. Um, Ms. Brown, we did already have you speak earlier. Um, I don't know if you have that up in error or if you felt you need, okay. Oh, she's, she's back. I'm going, going to go to, well, and Ms. Brown, is there something else that you needed to, like that you didn't address before? I'm, I don't typically bring people back on a second time, but if there's some different thing that you didn't get to that you feel you really need to tell us, then I can give you like a quick minute to do that. Ms. Brown? You're muted.
Yeah, no, I don't have anything else to say. I was trying to lower my hand and it
Okay.
I've said my bit. Okay, thank you though. Okay, bye.
And we have Mr. Oslin, and if there's anybody else that wants to speak who has not, if you would please raise your hand. Um, go ahead, Mr. Oslin.
Good evening, council. Um, that presentation from our city manager was very well put together. Uh, very impressive. I am pretty much in favor of how we're considering spending the D twenty funds. There are a couple of things that I think our council and our public needs to get a little bit more, I guess, concerned on and going forward with the county actually. And that is, uh, the social worker. The county is supposed to be survive, providing the social workers and maybe instead of providing the social workers, because our police chief has a very valid point that we should be doing this in-house because they know our community. Maybe we should be asking the county for some of our tax money back in funding a position for us. And I think we need to get firm on this. Seems like, um, things down the grade get funded a lot better than up in North County. And maybe it's time for us to take a little bit more of a stance. The only thing that I see that happens quite often from county support happens to be sheriff's, uh, backup when we're short-staffed in our city. Maybe there's another way for funding rather than D twenty funds going there. We get it back from the county. The, uh, next thing is, community-based power is on the agenda for next February. And I think we need to take a serious look at it next February. But it wasn't so much because of funding, it was because we don't have the staff. And, um, with strategic planning and everything going on, that was agreed by the council unanimously to bring it up in February, and I think we can stick with that. Um, and I think it needs to be addressed as well. Um, not only that, and I will, uh, give a little bit to fire. Fire and police definitely need the funding and the infrastructure. Want to make sure we are absolutely looking at every avenue for a firehouse and grant money for it. Because that's an expensive, uh, undertaking at thirteen million dollars. So anything out there, federal, state, to get some of our tax dollars back to our community, we should be giving all avenues at that. And, uh, a lengthy presentation, so I'm sure I missed a couple of other things. The other thing would be electric, um, charging stations. Maybe we should look into putting a few of them in our new parking lot that is close to City Hall. And I believe some of those companies such as Tesla would put them in for free if we had them at no expense to us and actually pay the bill. So, thank you very much for your time and I appreciate your presentation.
Thank you, Jeff. And I see a hand up now by Wendy Lewis. Ms. Lewis.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you to the council for your support of, um, the work I'm in. Um, so I'm with El Camino Homeless Organization, our Echo, and I just wanted to speak on the priorities and encampments being at the top. Um, this past year, I've actually, we've been able to add outreach teams um, in Atascadero and North County, new to our services. And there were a lot of lessons learned on how effective that personal outreach, um, can be to meet people where they're at, in the streets, in encampments. And we were able to connect with people. We had not had interactions with the past. And we saw how, um, successful that was unless those conversations happened and resources are offered and offered and offered. Uh, people really don't know there's options and it takes a lot of conversations to get people comfortable with, um, looking into services. So outreach, I think, definitely should be prioritized. We have some means to do that, but that's a limited granting opportunity. So for us to keep that going in the future, I'd love to have that looked at and then also that expansion of outreach, um, with extra mental health components and bringing in teams with different expertise, I think is really something to be stressed. Um, other lessons learned, um, this was the first winter we operated an emergency shelter. And through our partnership with the Atascadero Community Church, we also were able to, um, house for about five and a half months. Some of our most chronic, um, folks in our community that are unhoused and folks that, um, have severe, uh, mental health, um, substance abuse. And it was an opportunity to bring them in and provide safety and a place where they could start connecting with case management and resource options. And we saw that be very effective that out of, um, the folks that stayed with us, we actually had eighteen um, move over to Echo Atascadero and out of those eighteen, six were actually housed into permanent housing. And many are still in the process of getting those. So really having more opportunity for shelter beds, but different types of shelter beds, outreach, mental health support is key to kind of, um, helping the population and ultimately getting people housed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Wendy. And, um, I'm seeing no other hands other than Marty Brown again, and I think that's just the upper, upper, lower, up and down thing. So, um, do we have anyone else on the phone, Luke? I don't see a, a star or hand there.
We do not.
No, okay. All right. With that, I will close public comment and bring that back to council. I want to thank all of you for being here this evening and being engaged. And I know some of you, this might be your very first meeting. And others of you have been involved, um, in the process this year. And some of you have been involved over the last two plus years and, and beyond. And so thank you for being involved in your community and caring so much about what we are doing. A lot of, you know, a lot of support for, uh, you know, the unhoused population, for police, for mental health. And if money were no option, we would do everything. But money is very tight, even given D twenty. D twenty does not mean that suddenly, woo-hoo, party! And we can do everything. We cannot. Uh, we are, as you saw through our city manager's presentation, we are having to look at deferred maintenance equipment that is decades old, uh, systems that are crumbling. And so there is a lot that needs to be done. And as we came together as a council and as a community and with staff and put together our priorities, I think what staff has brought back is a very, um, they're actually able to accomplish more than I anticipated that we could, um, with what we have. So I, I'm really, my hat's off to them. Um, for those of you that are concerned that we're stressing encampments over something else, that's just the order in which it came in the, in the list. It doesn't mean that that's a priority over mental health. Cleaning encampments is the priority. It's just the, it's just how it came in the list. It's not that we're going to go out there and promote, hey, here's what we're doing for homeless. We're cleaning the encampments and then we're looking at mental health. So please do not take that to mean anything in particular. I would like to ask our chief, Masterson, because it came up several times. Uh, maybe chief, you could address the, 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 the training and support that our officers, um, currently have.
Yes, um, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you. We don't see you.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get my camera turned on here.
Okay.
We keep hitting the button, but nothing happens, which is the story of my life. Um, it'll come on in a minute. I just saw it pop. There we go. Um, yeah, um, right now, currently about forty percent of our police department have training in, uh, crisis intervention training. Uh, it slowed down a little bit during COVID because all the classes were canceled. Uh, it's starting to open back up. We actually have, uh, are limited, I should say, to one position in the next class coming up. Uh, because there's such a backlog in the county now because of that. So, um, I know in my past agency, we were proud to say that every one of my, every officer in my past agency have CIT training. That's a goal I have for this agency as well. Uh, it is a, a, a thing that's well worth the time and expenditure um, and the money to train our officers to handle those situations. We also have a couple of classes coming up. We're actually hosting a, uh, response to the non-criminal barricade. Um, and that's police talk for those people who are in mental crisis and have locked themselves in a home or they're threatening to harm themselves. It's a different concept of responding to them than the old days of, of a SWAT team and kicking in the doors and, and, uh, basically hurting them to get them to stop hurting themselves. Uh, so we're kind of looking at that. And, and like I said, we're hosting a class for the county, uh, coming up in July for that. So we're looking at different options for those trainings and, and then in, as far as our own officers going, we're talking about, uh, some peer counseling going on within the department. Fire departments are great at that. Uh, we in law enforcement need to take the, take the, uh, the knowledge they have and spread it to our own field. And then there's some different possibilities as well through programs called Cortico, which is a insurance-based app for, for mental illness for police and fire. So we're looking into different things.
Right. Thank you very much. And then I will also, uh, turn this back over to Rochelle. Um, if there's anything, uh, specific Rochelle that you would like to address. Some people got down into details and again, we're, we talked about a lot of things, but we're still keeping this, you know, somewhat broad. We're not going down to this minute detail. So, but I know that's a temptation of all of us, myself included. But I'll ask our city manager if there's anything that you saw that we needed to, uh, address that maybe I missed.
Um, no, I, I think you covered it and certainly everything that, uh, people talked about, you know, were, were ideas, um, and things that, uh, certainly we'd like to solve everything. Uh, we don't have the, the resources or the capacity to We don't have the, the resources or the capacity to do so. I can go into detail on, on most anything that, you know, may have come up. But I'll, I've talked a lot tonight, so I'll stop there.
Yeah. No, I think, I think when it comes to, you know, really the general overall theme from the individuals was, you know, training of police officers, which our, our chief has, has talked about, you know, CIT training, that type of thing. I know a couple of people brought up bilingual. We do have bilingual officers in the police department, I do know that. With regards to, you know, you know, ECHO and the support that we give them, certainly, you know, I mean, you, you see that in here, and it's something we've been doing and we will continue to do. You know, if you're wanting more support in other areas and we're not giving it, it's because we're stretched. We only have so many funds. And as you can see, you know, with the, the R team that we're putting together, that is to really be that complement of, you know, police and the mental health, and how do we address the myriad of situations that may come up? And really doing the best we can. I don't know that a lot of cities, particularly our size, are taking this type of thing on. As Charles said, this is the responsibility of the county. And what they're able to offer us isn't taking care of our needs. And so we're having to step up and take care of our residents. So I love that, love that acronym. And, you know, and we're doing that, and we will see how this evolves over time. We're doing the best we can today with the resources that we have. So I thank you all for your input, and I certainly thank staff. You have all done a tremendous job. I know how much work this was, how much effort went into this. And thank you all for the time and dedication that you put to it. So with that, the change that we've had currently is simply adding in that three CE that we've all agreed to. We want to make sure that's in our plan here. Is there any other feedback that we want to leave staff tonight as they move off with us? And I'll just kind of, I'm just going to kind of go around on the, the screen here. So I'll ask, I'll start with Councilmember Borbo.
No, I had, you know, questions earlier directly for the city manager. And so I know, I think, you know, we'll also address some of these issues in the Finance Committee as we go through the various sections of the budget. So no, I don't have any further questions right now.
Okay, well, or not even those questions, like we're at the end where we're giving the inputs.
Well, yeah, one thing I just want to, you know, point out is that on the first, after the Strategic Action Plan, we have the, you know, we have these, these little spreadsheet matrices, whatever you call them. And, you know, the first one being the D twenty tier-one items. And, you know, we anticipate D twenty will produce about four and a half million dollars in annual revenue, roughly speaking. And that the items on our list here are, you know, have a low-end cost of three point three million dollars and a high-end cost of seven and a half, depending on what happens. So we can afford that on the low end. If, if things start to come in the high end, we might have some further difficult decisions to make.
Indeed. Councilmember Funk.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. A few things, we heard, I heard a lot from people about the centrality of the mental health as an element of the outreach. So just as we are looking at bringing on the additional people in, in police, I want to encourage us to move sooner rather than later on the metal, the, our team staffing. And as we're bringing the police on to be, you know, we, we desperately need that and increase in our police staffing because of, we've stretched them for so thin for so long. But it's also, I think we need to be careful not to do that necessarily all at once. Because you get a cohort effect of people coming in together that may or may not be helpful in the department. But you, and you also get, I don't want us to feel pressure to, and I don't want you to feel pressure to ramp up the staffing in the police department so fast that we're not able to choose the quality of people who will make our department thrive and serve our community with safety and effectiveness and grace. So that's just in terms of how those are executed. We did hear a lot from people tonight about the supports for the unhoused population. And I was mindful of, in particularly Wendy Lewis noting that they, that the outreach has been really effective and, and that we, we may need to, to look at contracting with ECHO for some of the services that are currently supported by COVID grants for the, for the outreach. And that, you know, that's probably, it doesn't have to be huge, but, and I will, and mind you, I'm also, you know, I'll, I'll talk about this under reports, but I'm going to fight like, you know what? To get us money from the county, to get the county to step up and support these services in the communities in a bigger way. And that's going to be the, on a May fourth County Board of Supervisors' agenda. I would suggest in terms of our budget that the item that's currently over on tier-two, item number fourteen, which is the opportu, labeled opportunities reserves for programs for unhoused population, that, that we consider a smaller range. I don't think we have to do a five hundred thousand dollar program, but that we consider putting something in the sixty to eighty thousand range up into our tier-one funding rather than tier-two. If necessary, we could consider deferring for a little bit the sixty to eighty thousand that we've set aside for the essentialism evaluation. Because we're bringing on some new people and, and in some places, you know, in police in particular, you know, a lot of new people. And it's going to take time to get everybody acclimated and do that. And we're doing the general plan. So it may be helpful to have that happen after things have settled a little bit. So I think we could, could let, let that be a little bit later and accelerate just knowing we're going to probably need to do something to make sure that we have the outreach or that we have places for people to go if we don't like where they are camping out, that we have a range of options to do that. And we may need to team with others to make some things happen, and that will take some staff time and budget. So that, that would be my request on that. I would also encourage us, the grant writing, contract services are there in, in tier-one for the general fund. But the, I, I do want to make sure that that happens because I think we have the opportunity to leverage some programs that are out there now and get funding, as Jeff Ossle was suggesting, for some big-ticket items that would help us and take some of the burden off of our taxpayers by being, getting support for the creative things that we're doing and for maybe help the, if there's a way we can help the printery move forward, that would be a big help to our downtown as well. So that's, those are my most critical things on, on which things to move around.
Are you complete?
I'm complete.
Thank you. Councilmember Daras.
Thank you. Yeah, I would also like to thank Rachelle and staff for this awesome report. It's a lot of information in here, particularly when I went through the spreadsheet area of the costs, tier-one, tier-two, that what things are, you know, what monies are looking for, for the things that are needed, that we don't have and we need replaced and so on. It was very eye-opening, and it's going to be a challenge, I think, as we go through that. You asked my question, actually, before I got a chance to, of, of our police chief on, on staffing needs with mental, the mental health worker and the crisis situations and whatnot. I think that's going to be really important on how that's, I think it's broken down and what the, how the needs can be fulfilled with, you know, it's not just going to be a social worker, it's not going to, not just going to be a team. There's going to be a combination as, you know, anybody knows anything about police is the, every call is different and how, and how we handle those things. So this, I think, filling those needs are going to be really important. So I'm glad to see that that's going to be taken care of. But anyway, other than that, I have nothing more to add. I think this was a great list, it was well-done, and thank everybody for all their hard work.
Thank you. And again, yes, you did an excellent job. With regards to my colleague's idea for swapping those two, I respectfully disagree, and I'll, I'll tell you why, and I'm open to being wrong about it. My, I, my thought for the opportunity reserves for programs for unhoused population is we've got to get the R team going. Like, this is going to take a significant amount of time and get that up and going. There actually are a lot of resources available right now that we're able to let unhoused individuals know about. Sometimes they take advantage of those and sometimes they don't. It's often the ones who don't take advantage of it where we really have that challenge and where that R team is going to come into play and be so effective. With regards to holding off on the essentialism piece, which is really looking at our efficiencies, I think as we're bringing people on, that is the time to look at it. I don't want to bring people on and then have to change and retrain the way they're doing it. I think to be able to look at those efficiencies and make sure we're doing the things in the best way possible and when we're having a new position come in, and how do we make sure we optimize that? Because my goal with this is that we're able to continue to do more with less. And I've said this all along. Every other city, right, other than Pismo and AG, they've all passed their equivalent of D twenty. So, you know, in terms of salaries, we're not necessarily catching up. You know, we're going to catch up to where they were, and then they're going to keep going. And in Atascadero, as Rachelle said, I often refer to us as being scrappy. We are going to have to think differently. We can't simply look at, we need another body and we need to do more for this. Like, we have to be creative and scrappy. And that is my goal with the essentialism piece, is how do we look at getting more out of what we do so that we can offer more with less? Because that's who we are, and, and I don't see that changing anytime soon. Councilmember Borbo.
Yeah, since we're, you know, we're, we're talking about some specific items on some of these spreadsheets. I also want to move that specific item from tier-two to tier-one. I would, though, comment, as I have in the past, that one of the good things about D twenty, having some, you know, additional revenue we've not had in the past, is that instead of being the, the kind of organization that, you know, might look at something that costs five or ten thousand dollars and go, well, maybe we, you know, that comes up an opportunity to do something good, maybe we could do that. We might be able to look at something that costs a hundred or two hundred thousand dollars and go, you know, that's, that would be really worthwhile as an opportunity thing. So I wouldn't want to move that specific item, but I wouldn't mind including opportunities as, you know, that we spend some money on opportunities that crop up, whether it be in this area or any other area. So I'm kind of, a, a little bit willing to, to go along with what Councilmember Funk said, but not, not specifically for that, but just for the idea that we, instead of feeling like every ten thousand dollars is, is just a bridge too far to do, you know, to do a new initiative, I want to, I want D twenty to make us as a city that's can be flexible and take advantage of opportunities. And so I, I wouldn't, you know, mind saying, okay, you know, we have a line in there of a couple hundred thousand dollars of just for opportunities to do great things. You know, some, some opportunity comes along to do something that we haven't thought of because those things happen, especially if it's in the way of, if you match, if you match another thing, you know, you can get a lot, get a lot of bang for your buck, that sort of thing. I'm not excited about spending the sixty to eighty on, on, with a consultant for essentialism reviews. I, I know we need to review our processes, both those that are customer-facing to the public, where we have, you know, how are we interacting with public? And then our internal processes of how we get things done. I'm just never excited about spending money on consultants. So, especially management consultants. So I do have a little bit of reservation about that. I'm, I'm willing to defer on staff's judgment that they think that would be necessary, useful. But I am, and always inherently a little skeptical of spending money on management consultants. So those are my comments regarding some of the specific items that were brought up.
I would ask our city manager, don't we often have a line item in the different departments that is, is a sort of that in-case type of line item?
Uh, we do. So we do have a very small one in each of the departments and a hundred thousand dollars. Yes, very small, in each of the departments and, and a hundred thousand dollars citywide that we do. Unfortunately, it often goes towards the fire engine that broke down or those flat tires and other things that, that do crop up. We haven't had a ton, and we don't know when those are going to be. I mean, we had one bad year where we had significant problems with our fire engines, and it felt like one after the other. But you don't know that, whether you're going to need it for those types of things until later in the year. So it's, it's tough. But we could, we could certainly increase the contingency or split it into two or.
I would say that's a contingency. Well, you described there as a contingency, not an opportunity.
Yes.
Not an opportunity fund.
Yeah.
Well, and, and you could, in theory, so, you know, you, you know, both you and Councilmember Daras when you get into the, the budget process, I mean, you could put aside, because right now, we're not, we're talking amounts, but really, this was just staff going, here's a general idea. So for us to start getting down into amounts, I don't want us to do that. But your idea, Councilmember Borbo, and kind of, you know, playing off of what Councilmember Funk said, is how do we be open to opportunities that we didn't plan for in years one and two? But suddenly, oh, there's, and I'll use the downtown enhancement, even though that is a priority. But let's say I wasn't, but suddenly, you know, the community project funding comes available, it's shovel-ready. Why not apply for that, put some matching funds to it if we can get, you know, however many millions of dollars, like, that would make sense. So I think that's what, that's what, you know, Councilmember Borbo is trying to say. And Councilmember Funk has it kind of in a certain area, but certainly if that happened for homeless, like, we might say, yes, that's an opportunity we want to pursue, but not a specific item, but just that possibility.
Exactly, that's what I'm getting at. An opportunity, you know, arises and say, okay, you know, can we throw two hundred thousand dollars at X to make, to get a huge matching amount and really improve something?
Yeah. Councilmember Funk.
Yeah, I, I, I like that idea. I'm comfortable with this being a broader thing, knowing that there, that, you know, we've established some clear priorities, and we understand certain aspects of what we're doing that are highly leveraged in the sense that you get a big bang for your buck if you do something. And that's what we're looking for here. And I, and I, I see that in terms of the potential for needing to be, you know, needing to do something and be, and having the opportunity to do something in, in with the unhoused, but there may be other area, other aspects of that where we can use, you know, some money to be a little bit more entrepreneurial with the staff in pursuit of the priorities that the council has articulated and, you know, the values that we've articulated are in our, I think that, I think we could get something broader.
Yeah, I think our city manager has an idea. Have we given you something that's a little too wacky and out there? And you're like, okay, you don't realize the ramification over here, council. What would you say to us?
I would say that this is completely doable. I would like to work with the Finance Committee on putting some parameters on there because there will be a lot of people that say, hey, here's an opportunity. So trying to understand a little bit more, it sounds like you're really looking for opportunities where we can leverage our funds to, to really address a giant need of the, of the council or to obtain more grant funds for, you know, all of those types of things. So I think we can, I think it's absolutely doable, and, and we'll work with the Finance Committee and make sure we're proposing something that, that we all mean.
Or all of a sudden, some fire engine becomes available for only two hundred thousand dollars. We got to go after that puppy.
There you go.
All right, fantastic. Thank you to council, thank you to staff, thank you to the community. Wow, what, what an effort, what a time that we've put into this, and it has been well worth it. For those of you that are interested, we started our Finance Committee meetings already. And so the Finance Committee meetings are the meetings where Councilmember Borbo is chair and Councilmember Daras as vice chair, along with our city manager, Rachelle Rickert, our Administrative Services Director, Jerry Rangel, and our city treasurer, Jerry Seabock. Those five make up our finance. and our city treasurer Jerry Seabock. Those five make up our finance committee. And it's at those meetings where they get just really like down and into the details with the budget. And this is the CPA geek in me. I love it. It's, that was one of the things when I became mayor, I'm like, oh, I'm giving up the finance committee, um, because I always enjoy that. But i- if you're not a numbers person, but you're interested in like, you know, where does the money go? How does it spend? What does it look like? It's worth your time. So they did start last Thursday. There's another one this Thursday. Rochelle, could you maybe give a little bit of, of detail and, and tell us where it is, maybe on the website for people to check that out?
Oh, boy. Um, I'm sure it's on the website, but I don't know exactly. I can definitely look that up and, and we'll make it more prominent. But they are scheduled for each Thursday for uh the next four or five weeks. Uh, they are scheduled on Thursday afternoons at two o'clock, I believe. Uh, three o'clock, I apologize.
Three, three o'clock.
Yep, three to five. Uh, we typically take a section of the budget and work our way uh through the budget. Uh, last time, we tackled debt service funds and other funds. Uh, so a lot of the things like uh Apple Valley Landscape and Lighting District, those types of funds. Uh, this next coming Thursday, we're going to tackle capital projects, so uh roads and storm drains, and uh, you know, a lot of those types of things will be this Thursday. Uh, then we tend to work through uh some of our other operating funds, uh getting to general fund. Now, the D20 will be part of the general fund and part of those discussions. Uh, so Jerry, if you're on, if you can tell us when to when to tune in, if that's the part of the budget that really interests you, are we looking at?
Yes, we're, we're looking at those um following Thursdays, so I'm trying to look up the dates here.
May thirteenth potentially, or May sixth?
Um, trying for May sixth, but it may be May thirteenth, so we're just trying to plow through all of the data and make sure that we're ready for those um meetings, so um, not exactly defined at this point.
Okay. So definitely tune in, May thirteenth, May twentieth. Uh, those will be digging into detail. Uh, potentially May sixth. We will have, we will put information on the website in a place where people can intuitively find it, if it's, if it's not there. Uh, perhaps under the D20, we have a, a whole D20 section, we'll put some stuff there. Um, and
Hence our website update.
Yes, there we go.
That will be good. Thank you.
Uh huh.
All right, let's move on to um our one discussion item uh of COVID, and Rochelle, tell us about the orange tier.
I was just trying to look up the orange tier. I was so focused on the, the strategic plan that
This is our tier, right?
This is, uh, they were orange tier. That's right. That's good news. Um, so yes, we go into the orange tier, and it's effective tomorrow. Uh, it does have a lot of things uh that we'll be able to start opening up a little bit even uh further. Uh, there is a lot of information on the county website. I know that uh indoor activities uh can increase capacity, um I believe from twenty-five to fifty percent. Give me just one moment. Terry is texting me like crazy here, too. Uh, she is our PIO. Terry, do you want to come on and talk about uh the orange tier?
I don't think I see her on.
Okay, there we go. She, well, she's listening, but uh we will go for that. Uh, the county website has a lot of information on what's going to be available. Uh, we're starting to open up, have a lot more uh recreation programs. Uh, we're going to have our first brides at the pavilion in May. Yay! Uh, certainly, it's not, uh, you know, as we've seen in the past, and there's a lot of precautions that go in place, but uh, good things happening now that we're in the orange tier.
Nice. Any uh questions from council at all? All right, seeing none, I'll open up to public comment. Are there any folks on the webinar, or any callers that want to address us on any COVID issues? I'm seeing none. Uh, Laura, do we have anyone in the email that has written in about COVID?
We do not.
Okay, so I'll close public comment and bring it back. Uh, Councilmember Funk.
Yes, um, and Rochelle, I don't know if you happen to know this, but I'm, I'm interested if, if we have an idea of, of what proportion of our city employees who interact regularly with the public um have been vaccinated.
Uh, we do not know. Um, we cannot ask health information uh necessarily. I will tell you anecdotally, uh, it's a, it's a significant portion that are either completely vaccinated, have had their first shot, or have had their second shot, and, and waiting. So we have a lot of people throughout the process uh in that, but we don't have exact numbers.
Yeah, understood. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will go ahead and move on to council announcements and
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes.
Do you have somebody wanting to comment on the COVID item?
Oh, okay, I will reopen public comment then, and ask for that for that, uh, member of the public to speak.
Brenda Mack.
Me, it's, hi, it's just me, Brenda Mack again, and I am just going to comment since we're going to have more people out and about, that we really do need to try to get some public bathrooms going on because even though we're heading toward the orange, if you look at our numbers, our numbers are not going down in the county. It was just by finagling of numbers that we were able to get the exemption. So I'm just putting that out there. We need to be more vigilant about people being able to wash their hands. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Mack. And I will close public comment and bring that back. Um, all right, so let's go on to our council announcements and committee reports. I'm just going to circle here on the screen. I'll start with Councilmember Funk.
Okay, I uh met last week with the uh executive committee of the Homeless Services Oversight Council. And um we're gearing up to have a significant presentation on May fourth to the County Board of Supervisors jointly from HSOC and from uh Carolyn Berg, who is working in the County Administrator's Office, and leading um a uh uh staff initiative um where that works in concert with the HSOC, as we call it, the larger homeless group um to try, to work with the, the cities and the county supervisor districts uh to uh take um to move into action some of the recommendations that came through HSOC about getting people out of encampments, alternatives to encampments, or supported encampments. In particular, um they're looking to do pilots in several locations of the Blue Bag uh project, which is a way to get trash management uh into ca- encampments. Because that's one of the big issues, is that nobody picks up the trash. There's no trash haul. There, there's no place for people to handle that trash, and um, and that's and so we get these heavy public and environmental impacts, and very heavy visible impacts um as a result. So that, we're looking for, for that, and for um you know, other ways to, to, including, say, parking or other um opportunities to create those first-line levels of where are people going to go if we don't want them inhabiting the parks that need to be shared public spaces for everyone. Um, and that, and if we don't want those to be taken over as individual private spaces, but you need to make sure that people have a place to go. So there's the pushing on that. Uh, the county has identified homelessness as a priority area in the, in a similar process to what we've done today. Um, and this is a, a bid to look for the kinds of funding, and also for some communication support. Because how we think about this and talk about this is a very complex issue, and how we understand who else is working on it. Now, because we're not the only ones that are um, you know, uh, are doing some extra lifting on it. Um, we, we have others that, other, this is, this is coming up in, in um city after city, and, you know, in, in throughout the county. Um, and looking for uh with everybody needing to do a little something in order to uh create some, some better ways to um make homeless lists uh a, something of shorter duration, and that is of less trauma to both the individuals involved and to the community. Um, so that's um, I'm just checking my list here to see. Oh, and then um um, the design review committee will be meeting this Thursday. Um, and Mayor Potem Newsom and I will be involved in that. Um, and we are going to be um looking at uh the next generation of the long-awaited plans for the Dove Creek commercial area. So folks in Dove Creek and Los Lomas and that area, they want to be paying attention. The uh DRC is going to be giving some feedback to um that um to, to the, the developers regarding, you know, there, they've changed some things in the, in the the height of the buildings and the way things are sited, and, and some other things about the project. Yeah, in response to public comment, and it's coming back to the DRC for additional perspective at this time. The public comment is welcome.
Are you complete?
I'm done.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Daraes.
Thank you. One, one quick question for Councilmember Funk. The uh, DRC meetings, is that at three o'clock on Thursday?
Um, I believe is it, is it two, but let me check.
It's just be on Wednesdays. Are they on Thursdays now?
Yes, they are on Thursdays now.
Yeah, it did used to be Wednesday, yeah.
Yeah, we have members who had, had conflicts with the uh Wednesday times. Including, including uh conflicts with the, the Homeless Services Oversight Council, which I now chair, so that uh, oh, I see, I see Director Dunsmore has stepped up to save me from, you know, having to go um risk my calendar.
It is 2:00 PM this Thursday. Thank you.
Two o'clock. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that was my most important question.
Councilmember Daraes, do you have an announcement or report?
Well, the only, only thing I had is the, as you mentioned already, the finance committee met last week, we're meeting again this week, and several Thursdays following um that as well, but that's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you. And Councilmember Borbo.
Yes, thank you. Um, I do have a report uh regarding the IWMA, or Integrated Waste Management Authority. On April fourteenth, uh board met, and the board voted seven to six to rescind the polystyrene ordinance. Um, however, the, it was pointed out that there is a provision in the uh IWMA Joint Powers Agreement that says that, and any, any member can request that that at least eight votes be required for an act, an item. And so the seven-six vote was not sufficient to uh carry out that action. So as a result, um, that ordinance, which had been slated to go into effect in two thousand nineteen, or two thousand twenty, April two thousand twenty, and had been suspended for one year, uh essentially went immediately into effect, um although with the um a, a separate motion that the, the staff needed to focus at this point in time on education and not enforcement. As a result of that, um, well, I would say as a result of that, um, at last Tuesday's Board of Supervisors meeting, uh Supervisor Pashong asked uh to put on a future county agenda um a discussion about the county withdrawing from the IWMA Joint Powers Agreement, and asked against the county staff to come back with a, a more thorough analysis of the cost and steps in doing us doing that, potentially withdrawing. So um, we'll see where, where that goes. Um, it would have some substantial impacts across the, across the county and in the jurisdictions as we face all of the, the new requirements of SB thirteen eighty-three regarding um organic waste and, and other things. So, anyway, um, it's, it's, who's all of us to read the joint powers agreements in detail as um, you know, which I have done, but I got to say that didn't jump out at me. So um, anyway, that's my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Borbo. Uh, our county white mayor's roundtable got uh canceled for March, so or no, we're in April, April. Uh, so on to May, and everything else is coming up in May, and now the Economic Vitality Corporation, that should now say Reach, we're going to bimonthly meetings for what used to be considered the EVC. There's now a committee that is uh, an arm of that, that is looking specifically at issues in Slow County. So that next meeting will be in May. And with that, I will move to ask if there are any individual determinations or actions, because we haven't done enough tonight. No, none from staff. You know what? Good job, everyone. Um, and uh, we'll see you in a couple weeks. Meeting adjourned. Good night.
Good night.